So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the number seven 2023 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Senior Pastor Larry Patton to come forward and give us an indication.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I raise this a little bit?
No.
No, I got at least one friend.
Only one.
As Robert Lee used to say, now I got to find five more to carry my casket. I just want to say before I open, in prayer, the fire services had a few big hits the last couple of weeks with the death of Tommy Brady and Chief Howes and the tragic way that he lost his son. And so, as we come together and pray, I would just like you to focus a little bit on the loss that we know that's all around us, but particularly pray for our youth. They are under attack. Our youth is under attack, and we see it every day. And it's tragic. It's just tragic what the world is doing to our children. And so, I just ask you to focus on that as I open this up in prayer. And I do want to say thank you for allowing me to be here. It's a privilege to be in this room and to open up in prayer and not be in here because I'm in trouble or that I'm asking for help.
That comes later.
Let's pray. Father God, through whom all things were created, you gave birth to the earth and the universe. I ask for your blessings over this morning's session. I pray that the men and women here today come together for the good of your greatest creation, mankind. I pray that they have eyes to see that each person in this room and each person they govern is a unique creation whose life has been part of your plan from the beginning and worthy of their respect and love. I pray that they have ears to hear the guidance of the Holy Spirit, the source of all godly wisdom, and ears to hear each other humbly, free from bias, and with an open mind. As the Psalmist says, "I pray that the favor of the Lord our God be upon us and confirm for us the work of our hands." Yes, confirm the work of our hands. I pray that the word spoken today further your will, and I pray all these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Have a great morning, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've called Larry Patton lots of things. I think it's the first time I've called you Senior Pastor.
It is, isn't it? And don't repeat any of the other things.
I'll try not to. Thank you for joining us this morning. First off, I want to acknowledge two of the Commissioners are vacant. Commissioner Russell will be here later. She had a doctor's appointment that she couldn't get out of. And Commissioner Cox is participating in jury selection. Even those of us elected have to perform our civic duties. So, Commissioner Cox will be here later if he gets freed up in time. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion on second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have several public service announcements. As most of you probably already know, last week, we lost a great Calver County icon in George Owings. George Owings served this county in the military. He served as a state legislator. He served as the Secretary of Veterans Affairs. George was an old-school politician. He never let party interfere. He always worked hard to do what was best for his constituents. And especially as Secretary of Veterans Affairs, he was truly, truly committed to serving the veterans as he was one. And if you look at his history, he was appointed by Republicans and Democrats. Even though he was a Democrat, it didn't matter because everybody understood that George worked for the people and didn't work for parties. So, we will greatly miss George Owings and want to extend our sincere condolences to his family. And Pastor Patton mentioned the tragic death of Jacob Howes. Jacob was a young man, nineteen years old, and for some reason decided that his life wasn't worth living. And just reminds all of us that have children, you need to love and support your children because you never know what day will be their last. And as a parent, I've always heard, we were never designed to bury our children. And at that Saturday, at that funeral, there was a tremendous outpouring. And I talked to Tommy Howes yesterday, Jacob's father. He said that he couldn't have gotten through this without all the support. But it's just another tragic reminder of, as Pastor Patton mentioned, to support our children and our youth. And we have lots of services out here to help. If you know of someone or if you feel like you need help, there's lots of help out here to support you. And while we don't understand why they make these decisions, they do. And we need to do our best to help them in every way that we can. So, we need to keep the Howes family in our prayers also.
Well said.
There is a, just doesn't seem important now, there's an art mural contest for the Appeal landfill. The deadline has been extended to November 30th for residents ages six to eighteen to participate and submit their artwork for a public mural at the landfill. Submissions can be sent through the calvercountymd.gov/recycle website. And also, we're going to celebrate Veterans Day. And on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at ten thirty, there's going to be a ceremony here at the Courthouse Square if anybody's interested to attend to celebrate our veterans. And that concludes my public service announcements at this time. Next, that brings us to proclamations. The first proclamation is for the Optimists of Calvert Youth Appreciation Week. Commissioner Ireland.
Mr. Jack Brown, will you please come forward, introduce yourself? And your crowd you have with you, sir.
Thank you. Jack Brown, retired educator in the county, member of Calvert, Optimist Prince Frederick, and co-chair of our group of youths that we're going to have the proclamation for. I'd like to dovetail on the pastor. It is, in his prayer, it is sad for some of the things that our children have to go through now and grandchildren. And this is a positive example of hard work, good parenting, dedicated, and quality character and leadership that you're going to see today. I'm a member of Calvert Optimists Club, Prince Frederick. I'd like to introduce my co-chair, Ann Weems, and Barbara Miller. Would you please stand, please? And do we have any other Optimist members in the crowd? Okay, thank you. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
We're here today to recognize a group of children, a group of students, that have worked hard through the last four years in high school. They have developed talents in leadership, character, math, arts, athletics, to the point where they are recognized and solid citizens in our county. And this is our future. The Optimists Club has a project that is set up by our international organization called Youth Appreciation Week. And we in Calver County have been doing this for fifty years. COVID knocked us down, slowed us up, but now we're getting on track to honoring these good kids. We do this in conjunction with the Solomons Optimists Club. The Solomons Club and our club combine our resources and are able to recognize ten seniors from each high school: Calvert, Huntington, Northern, and Patuxent. This enables us to cover our county and enables us to at least recognize forty to forty-five outstanding students in the county. Today, they're getting a proclamation from you, a very valuable gesture that is important, and they will appreciate. They have a lunch today, and then on Thursday, we have a banquet set up for them Thursday evening, one hundred and fourteen. And they are invited to get certifications, recognition with their bios that have been developed, and their parents to come to the fairgrounds and enjoy this with us and a chance to honor them. Barbara, have I missed anything?
I think you did.
Okay. What we will do is to ask each of the groups of high school students come up with each other. And I was told they're going to take a picture. They'll stay with their high school group, and then we should be finished, I guess.
Okay, as Mr. Brown said, if, where do you want to start, Mr. Brown? What school do you want to start with?
Calver High.
Calver High School. If you're from Calver High School, please come up to the microphone, introduce yourselves briefly, and come on up to the front.
Good morning. I'm Corbin Bradner, and I'm from Calver High School.
Hello, I'm Karen Funchen. I'm from Calvert High School.
I'm Sarah Beavard. I'm from Calver High School.
Congratulations.
I'm Faitham Harris from Calver High School. Thank God for this.
I'm Sarah Davis. I'm from Calver High School.
Go ahead, sir.
Brayden Sawyer. I'm from Huntington High School.
Edric Xander, Huntington High School.
Catherine Polo from Huntington High School.
Hi, I'm Brietta Delzell from Huntington High School.
Hello, Dustin from Northern High School.
Hello, I'm Troy Nolteimer from Northern High School.
I'm Noel Blackman from Northern High School.
Good morning. I'm Kaylee from Northern High School.
Hi, I'm Dorach Patel from Patuxent High School.
Hi, I'm Elena Salsedo from Patuxent High School.
I'm Lillian Erickson from Patuxent High School.
I'm Ivy Blackwell from Patuxent High School.
My name is Eden Wainwright, and I'm from Patuxent High School.
Hello, I'm Victoria McCrery from Patuxent High School.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Tinsley from Patuxent High School.
Good morning. My name's Mackenzie Ketter from Patuxent High School.
Can we get in person with you?
Sure.
Yep, you can go right in here. Just watch your step.
So, quite the crowd. Mr. Brown was actually my PE teacher in nineteen eighty-eight at Calver High School. I'm not trying to tell them how old you are, sir. Promise. Ann Mike?
I was eighty-six.
Eighty-six? Yeah. Mr. Brown, thank you, and the Optimists for doing what you guys do and volunteering and recognizing our youth. Appreciate it very much. Read the proclamation. Whereas the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource and the vast majority of youth are concerned, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens. And whereas the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young people deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas Optimists International launched its first organization-wide Youth Appreciation Week program in nineteen fifty-seven to encourage, commend, and recognize teenagers whose actions put them on the right track to become the adult leaders of tomorrow. And whereas since nineteen sixty-nine, year before I was born, the Optimists Club of Calver Prince Frederick has recognized and honored the outstanding youth of Calver County as part of the Youth Appreciation Week program and is now joined by the Optimists Club of Solomons. And whereas, it is an honor for the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County to participate in this very worthwhile program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of November fifth through November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three be known as Youth Appreciation Week, and Calver County be it further proclaimed that by this action, we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume responsible roles in the future of humanity, given under our hands and seal this seventh day of November, two thousand twenty-three, will be signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations. Did you get the honor? You the Messiah.
She's all ready.
Get over here where you can be seen. It's the nicest whole radio ever done.
My bald head clears.
We'll blame Todd.
Thank you all for your patience. I'll make sure everyone can see. Did you just have to get your blinks out? One more blink quick. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
You gotta stay put for one second, if you will.
You got everybody?
Did everybody have more?
You guys all?
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They been good?
Doing all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Okay, guys, this may happen.
We want to take the proclamation, but we're getting two signatures, and I'm going to do Thursday.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Brown, the three votes that Todd did was retention center.
My lips are sealed.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Down the hallway, guys. And remember, we gotta be quiet.
Take care. Continue.
Yeah, you too.
We gotta go over and then we'll catch you. I mean, I remember making a few passes. Man, if I had a pot, I'd like that.
Okay, they're good.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. You want to get us started?
I definitely would like to get us started. So, my name is Lisa Cottle. I'm the long-term care manager with the Office on Aging. And I'm fortunate enough to work with our caregivers in our county. And I just want to say, I have been working with caregivers for over thirty years. And the stories are becoming more difficult to hear, more tragic. You know, our senior population is growing. So, we have more and more older adults who need this extra care. And unfortunately, we have a lot of older adults who don't have loved ones, family members who are available or willing, even willing, to step up and do this care. So, I really treasure our caregivers in our county. They do a valuable service to their loved ones and to everyone by helping the ones that they take care of. So, at the Office on Aging, we provide consultations to our caregivers. We also provide a monthly newsletter for caregivers. That's specific just for caregivers, and different events. Next Monday, we're working with hospice to do a dementia live program where we have, fortunately, it's limited, it's already booked, but where people go through assimilation of what it's like to have dementia. And I went through it years ago. It's definitely worthwhile. We're hoping to do another event next year. So, you know, I encourage anyone who is dealing with caregivers, loved ones with dementia, to participate in this. So, I do have a few, I believe, caregivers in the group, but I think Jennifer wants to say something. I'd like to have them come up.
Sure, absolutely. And then come on up. Lisa, come on up. Yeah, and then everybody introduce themselves.
My name is Dawn Ray, and I have a caregiver support group at Plum Point and Patuxent United Methodist Church.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Somers, and I'm a caregiver for my mom who's eighty-one with dementia.
Jennifer Morland, Director of Community Resources. I really just wanted to say a special thank you to our long-term care staff, Lisa Cottle, and our case management team and MAP coordinators that all play a supportive role in helping out caregivers in our community. My mom retired this year, sixteen-year career as a caregiver after being a nurse. And she's also provided caregiving for our grandparents. So, it's a labor of love. And there's that saying that the end is the beginning again, and it kind of is. That same kind of love and nurturing that you do to your children, you will do with your parents. And like Lisa said, I hope that everyone has the opportunity to have family members that care for them. But if they don't, then having paid caregivers in our community, especially caregivers that are paid equitably so they can have a good quality of life living here, is very, very important. Thank you.
So, is that everybody?
Yeah.
And I would be remiss not to mention Ed Sullivan, who is probably running late or detained today.
He's detained.
But then the whole team, really. So, you know my passion for all this. And I will tell you, everybody that knows Jennifer knows. She's a sweetheart, nice thing. Mess with seniors, though, and see how she gets. And I didn't know that side of her till we actually had a meeting one day with, and I'll leave the agency out. And my goodness, let me tell you what, you know, it wasn't safe to be in that room. I tell you what, but we got to where we needed to be real quick and got it fixed real fast because she is very passionate, as of all you are. And you know, you mentioned something where they don't have family members or they don't come around. And it's really sad because seniors, they've been there. They've done it. They, you know, I know, you know, the world's so much smarter, and it's not. You know, you know, these seniors, you know, they built this country. And then they're the ones that drove us to everywhere and did everything. And then sometimes, unfortunately, they sit in their own room alone with nothing, and it's heartbreaking. I tell you, I couldn't do what you guys do. I'd be crying every day. I kid you not. I really would be. It just breaks my heart. I don't like to read, as that's obvious sometimes, you know. And I love to ask seniors' stories because they did it in real life. And, you know, and I would, and I would sit with, like, World War II veterans and stuff like that, and tell me about it. Or, you know, I actually got to meet some people that had met, you know, just significant people through history, you know, and to listen to their stories. And they're just a treasure. They really are. And I don't know what the next generation will be telling about, how to get on Twitter faster. I mean, you know, you know what I mean? It's not like they met FDR, you know, and people like that. And so, it's just, it's really God's work that you do. It really is. And so, thank God that we're here. And I just want to read this for you folks. It says, "Whereas the National Family Caregivers' Month is an annual national observance in November, developed by the Caregiver Action Network to recognize over fifty-three million family caregivers in this country. And whereas family caregivers are the backbone of our long-term care system, doing essential work with devotion, often at great emotional and financial cost. They provide crucial care and medical assistance to parents, children, siblings, and other loved ones. It is imperative that we recognize the contributions of these devoted individuals who offer endless hours of care and support to loved ones in their homes and communities with the purpose of sustaining quality of life and ensuring their health and dignity. And whereas the Calver-
Specifically, the board may wish to consider amending its request for legislation to instead be included among the following legislation. It would add Calvert to Carroll, Charles, Harford, and Washington Counties, where a person may not stand in a roadway median divider or intersection to solicit money or donations of any kind from the occupant of the vehicle. Fiscal impact is negligible. Conclusion and recommendations. Staff recommends the board consider the foregoing and advise if the board wishes to revise its request for state legislation to address solicitation and panhandling to model that applicable in Charles County.
Questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. We've had some safety concerns with people that have been panhandling, soliciting donations, money in shopping centers, and our deputies in law enforcement have no tool at this point to be able to address these types of situations. We put the legislation last year. It did not make it through. I'm in favor of this legislation and the change similar to what Charles County has in place.
Actually, last year it didn't even get submitted for consideration, so it didn't get a committee assignment. So we're hoping that in taking Delegate Long's concerns into consideration, that this will at least get drafted and submitted to committee with support of the delegation.
So John, do the code home rule districts, do they, are they able to enact legislation like this on their own, or would they still have to go to Maryland for this?
So interestingly, where the state law is in effect, it preempts local law. That does not matter whether it's a charter or code home rule county. So Montgomery, Prince George's County already have solicitation prohibitions of one form or another in Article twenty-one dash five oh seven, well, section twenty-one five oh seven of the transportation article. Prince George's gets into what's allowed under overpasses, and so it gets fairly detailed. But they also had to have that passed through the state.
So, and this is when we started getting into legalese, is the protection piece that's a concern, is that it's considered the same as free speech? Do I read that properly? No?
So the Constitution, as it's been interpreted by the Supreme Court of the United States, is more protective of non-commercial speech, the political speech than it is advertising for come buy X Y Z brand toaster.
Because when I think of this, I think of the person that sticks their head in the car, gets in front of the car, talks to the person on the sidewalk that's trying to get their groceries, trying to solicit funds. I don't really picture somebody who's stating an opinion that they have about the world. I don't put the two together. So I'm with Commissioner Ireland completely. We need a tool. It's getting worse. And you don't know, the average person out there, they don't know who's approaching them. I mean, it's not the same as a nonprofit that's wearing a vest that says whatever club that they're sponsored by, you know. I just, in today's world, it's a different world. Just, I think we need something like Commissioner Ireland's, a tool for law enforcement.
Certainly forty years ago, you wouldn't be concerned that somebody standing in the median would be trying to take your mother's car or your daughter's car. And certainly, those concerns are more real today. Incurrences happen more often today.
Well, we see it. We see it every day on the news. So we don't need that here.
You need a motion? If there's no other discussion or questions?
I move that we revise our request for state legislation to address solicitation and panhandling to model that applicable in Charles County.
Second? I have a motion, the second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next, I even under old business, Office of the County Administrator, United Partners are here.
I've got three people represented. Couple of Steve Williams.
I did two per second. I did, I thought same thing.
It's a compliment.
It is, it is, it's a compliment.
Oh, come forward, come forward.
Good morning.
Come forward.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. They were perfectly on time.
Absolutely. Sorry you got stuck in traffic.
We're just glad we're here.
Stuck on the bridge, were you?
Well, we're not going to go there.
You knew that was coming.
So good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ruthie Buckler. I'm the Special Projects Program Manager in the Office of the County Administrator's Office. With me today are Doug Witt, President and CEO of United Bridge Partners, and Addison Smith, Principal with Outta Crust LLC. Mr. Witt and Mr. Smith appeared before you on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three to present a proposal for replacing the Thomas Johnson Bridge in Solomon's with a new four-lane toll bridge. At that meeting, the board requested that United Bridge Partners held several public outreach sessions to inform the public of their proposal and gauge community support. United Bridge Partners held four public meetings in September, two in the South County, one in the Mid County, and one in North County. They also held similar meetings in Saint Mary's County. Following these meetings, United Bridge put together the report that's included in your packet today and is also available online as part of today's agenda. Mr. Witt and Mr. Smith are here today to review that report with you and with our citizens, and they welcome the board's questions and hope to receive your guidance on the next steps. So I will turn the floor over to them to provide their update.
Thank you so much for the introduction. Thanks for the time today. We've had several meetings in the four months. We got a lot of feedback. You have most, you have it in the report. It confirmed our instincts of why we came here. You know, we've opened four of fourteen bridges in the last four years around the country. So if there are fourteen in our size around the entire country, we've opened four of them. Three of them this year. And, you know, the patterns in all the states we're in continue. You know, there are three things here. If, for, you know, to fit and work, you know, an injured bridge, an unfunded solution, and a willingness. Now, we can tell you, being in twenty-five states, that the first two are all over the country. The hard one is, you know, does it make sense to go ahead and move forward because tolling is not popular on any, on any front? It just isn't. But it's worked in very well in five situations over the last five years. Quite frankly, I got to tell you, I think, I think as I go around the country, there's a little bit of view for the ones that have been open. Thank God, we got the three-and-a-quarter thirty-year fixed mortgage in twenty twenty-one. I mean, applied to the bridge thing, because costs will continue to go up. It's not going to get any better. But I'll just, I'll just stop with that and just open it up for you, because you've seen all of that, and you've seen all of that. But we're here really for questions and, you know, get your thoughts. But we got a lot of feedback, and people were very candid and honest, and we thought they were helpful sessions. We hope they were helpful for you.
So how many people attended the sessions in total?
Roughly about three hundred across all seven, something like that, certainly over two fifty. Spirited.
What was the, you know, what were most of the questions about that you received?
Let me start, Addison, and you can kind of chime in here. Well, I would, I would say first, there was a resounding message in the community that the bridge needed help unequivocally. And there was a whole wide range of kind of emotion around that whole issue. Two, there was a split on understanding as to whether there was funding available or not. There was a group that said there's no money, it won't be. And, you know, there was another group that was, how can that be? Referencing prior governors and all that kind of stuff in the history. So that was one. Another one was, we got a lot in the tolling, put it mildly, what the toll rates are, how all of that is.
What was your answer to that, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, it was also, no, I know, it's like, this is just a conversation here.
Right.
So it's on all this. So we're just, the first one, you know, it's like, well, you said it was like seven hundred million dollars, and now it's three hundred million dollars, and now you're down to two fifty. And I said, our intent is to find and help the community find the best-fit structure at the least cost to minimize the tolls. So we're trying our darndest to go ahead and figure that out, and we're processing over these several weeks. I will share with you that in another state, we had a bridge that was going, that, you know, was at a hundred and fifty million, it was at ninety million, it jumped up to a hundred and fifty, and we had to find how to take out sixty million to keep the tolls down. And we didn't, because otherwise the tolls would have been terrible on that. So, you know, there was just the setup on putting a frame around it, said, look, you need to scope it out and chunk it down. We can't do, we're not in the business of doing all the roads around there. We can make a contribution, but let's just say it's, I don't know, we'll probably get called out again, but I'd like to take it down as low as possible, but let's just say it's for an even round number, two hundred and fifty million, maybe three hundred. So let's just say two fifty. We just, you know, we heard, we heard spirited comments about, I can't afford to do this. And we go over the bridge all the time and all, I mean, very heartfelt stuff. And we said, look, we're here sharing, we're not selling. If this doesn't work, it doesn't work. I think they appreciated that. And I said, so they asked all about that and said, you know, we've done programs that have been, you know, helpful for the community, you know, and are there possible ways of doing certain kinds of monthly passes and all that? But at the end of the day, the numbers have to work out, and, you know, maybe there's a way to go ahead and do that. And then they wanted to get in on rates, although we never went there in terms of rates. Somehow, social media picked up a rate of nine fifty each way, which, that was a lot. I heard, I heard that, I go, no, it's like, so we don't know the scope, and so it was, we'd like to keep it under four, and then we'd like to keep it under three, and as we heard more, you know, we'd like to keep it down even further. But, you know, it's still at fifty thousand feet. The need is there. The, I think there's an understanding that the money is not there. And I think it's our understanding that there is a whole list for the state of projects and the rankings and all that, and, you know, that, that didn't move up in the rankings in terms of priority. Maybe it gone, stayed the same or went under, so there wasn't any positive movement in that direction. And, but people, although people didn't like it, I think they softened to the notion of, to try. I mean, to say, well, let's, let's see. So those would be the kind of general comments that I would have. Is there anything you want to add?
I think, you know, a lot about scope, again, just better understanding of the financial situation of the bridge and where things stand, so.
And your projection was based on a four-lane bridge for cost?
At fifty thousand feet on all of that, yes, at this point, and, you know, we, we haven't gone that far. I mean, to the deep down, but two fifty to three hundred, and, you know, and then we just, we curiously looked at probably some other kinds of options and all of that, but...
So how do you do a bid projection or cost projection if you don't even have a concept?
We have more than, we have more than a concept. But what I would say is, every state has a process, and so I'm going to put this out here, and a lot of them include RFPs. An RFP would be a challenge for us on this. We have spent an enormous amount of time. We know how to do it, and we specifically know how to do exactly what we're talking about and have done it, and there aren't a lot of people who are doing this and managing bridges and toll and managing, and the way we do it, of not coming into ten percent equity in case it doesn't work, and then just picking up and going. When you're a hundred percent equity upfront, you're in the community. We're in it with you and completely aligned. And we need people to go over it, and so we need a toll that works for everybody. Everybody needs to win on that. Otherwise, you'll see someone else here with Addison the next time without me. If we get a great new bridge and no one goes over it, so it has to work for everybody. But, you know, we could, we could get into, we could get into that. We know enough that there are some options that we'd consider, and we'd probably think about some other ones, but I would also share, from a process standpoint or risk standpoint, there's an, well, it's been going on for a while, but it's increasing, and there are some recent events on some of this as well, which will remain nameless in other locales, where contractors, design engineers, and providers have invested in enormous amounts of money, like two million dollars plus or five million dollars plus, only to have the project pulled over a two-year period. That's a love of risks we can't, we just can't support to go ahead and do that, and on some of that. And, you know, it's, it's happened in certain states, maybe you've experienced here where projects on and then it's off, and so, I mean, given that we'd be putting in all the money, managing all the risk and getting the team, putting a fixed price with a fixed date, and then operating going forward on a hundred percent equity basis, that's a, it, it, it's an additional layer of risk that is pretty hard to see, and it's a growing, it's actually a growing risk right now. So, but to answer your question, we, if there were arrangement that makes some sense to kind of, if this resonated with you all in the counties and everyone, and, you know, you validated the way you do it beyond what we've got from our three hundred, two hundred and fifty or three hundred people over our seven evenings about any of this, and this lines up, then, you know, we could probably talk about some ways forward, but we'd love to support you if we can, but, you know, we, we probably need to get some sort of assurance or commitment from you that this made some sense and you wanted to proceed. I will add one other thing, because on this RFP thing, so it's like, oh, you got to go ahead and do an RFP and, you know, to save costs. Well, let's just go with the two hundred and fifty million dollar number. It's our estimation, and we've seen this in other states over the last several years, that every year you weigh, it'll be an additional twenty-five to thirty-five million dollars of cost. So the sooner you do it, the cheaper it is, and these processes can go on for a couple of years. When I started in this, there was zero interest rates. I'm not sure we're going to see anything like that, and I was, I'm old enough to know what nineteen seventy-three was like. And so I think these are challenging times, but doing nothing's expensive, and so, but it's, but again, it's got to fit, and it's got to be a trade-off, and there's no, there's no perfect answer. And as we said to everyone, this is a hard problem. This is a hard challenge, and they all admitted that and said so. Well, I will, I, you know, I might as well just say, this, it did kind of come up, they go, well, you guys are going to go ahead and have these seven meetings, and then, you know, you're going to go ahead, check the box, and then, you know, get with the commissions and do whatever you want anyway, and do a backroom deal. I got that a couple of times, and I go, no, we aren't.
That's not going to happen.
No, 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 I know, but I, I knew that anyway, but I'd just say, we wouldn't do that even if we could. It's just not, it's just not right. Now, everybody has to get on board and be around, be behind it and say, I mean, you're not going to, everybody meaning, what everybody means, a hundred percent of everybody is probably hard on anything these days. I got four boys, I can't get a hundred percent on anything. But I said, no, we wouldn't do that. I said, if you want it, we're here to help and try and support you, but if this doesn't resonate with you, we understand that as well.
So, good one. Well, I think, so the question you're trying to answer, I don't think you can. You say two hundred and fifty million dollars, you can say a dollar, say a trillion, because you don't know what the state regulations are going to be on you. We don't own that road, and you don't own that road. You don't, you don't know what the state's going to require. We don't know what the state's going to require, and you're just looking at just a replacement piece. So unfortunately, there's too many moving parts to make it that simple. The number one thing from folks, if it was free, if you were saying this was not a toll bridge, you would have unanimous support, correct? But that's not, that's not what's going to happen here. You're a business, and you're here for money, which is, that's what businesses do, right? I mean, this is a business opportunity, potential for you guys. Unfortunately for the folks down there, they, they can't take on that toll. They just can't. And probably the folks in Saint Mary's don't use the bridge as much as folks in Calvert do, because we're going over there for servicing goods. Very few of them are coming this way. So you don't have even an even proportionate way there.
Sure.
So there's so many boxes, so to speak, that would have to be checked, but the bottom line is folks want to hold you to a toll that you can't give them, because you truly can't give a number. Going to Commissioner Hans's thing, you, you have a few conceptual things probably in your head and the things you've done places, but you don't know what the state's going to say. You just don't.
I'm not sure.
Well, if the state says you think you're going to put that piece over there, the state may say, you're not going to put that road right there, you're going to put it here, and you're going to access this. I mean, there's nothing, until you get it back from the state what they're going to allow, and they, and will they even sign off, because it's their road?
Right.
They may not agree. We've tried to fix, we tried to fix Cove Point Road when the largest liquid natural gas plant was being built eight hundred and sixty-eight feet from a house for safety reasons, and the state told us no. So it's no slam dunk that the state's just going to turn around and say, do this bridge. So there are so many questions that would have to be answered before you could even come up with that number. So I appreciate your efforts, and I think it's probably, it's just an unfair question to you. I don't think you can answer the toll question, to be quite honest. Whether it's nine dollars, two dollars, I just don't think you can do it. Because I don't think you have all the information to answer that question.
Well, let me give some assumptions here that may be completely misguided, but here are some of the assumptions on which we give us some confidence to put a range estimate around that, that it would be three or under. Under the prior administration, we had a conversation with the Maryland DOT Director and said, if it resonates locally, we will, we will support transferring the bridge to the local communities. So whether that's correct or not, the assumption, assuming it is, is that then that would give you the local authority and wouldn't have the onus of the Maryland DOT, whatever regulations around that. So that was an ongoing assumption. If we didn't believe that that was possible, we probably wouldn't have spent the time here.
And I still don't believe that's possible.
That's okay. We're, we're, I have been considered a delusional optimist most of my life. I hope I remain that till my last day.
When I can't fix Cove Point Road.
I, 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 I...
Okay. And without state funding, and I couldn't fix Cove Point Road.
I, I, I can't assess that, but I'm just telling you, our assumption was, we heard it was possible. So if we didn't think it was, we took that assumption, and that allowed us to move forward on that. Secondly, there is a, there was a lot of talk about the surrounding road infrastructure that was required as well. And that was like a spaghetti conversation on all of this, where does it begin, and where does that all end, and all of that. And it's our experience, and certainly mine, over forty years of running a business, is that sometimes you just have to chunk it down into certain pieces, and that may or may not apply here, but I'm not sure, so, well, let's put it this way. It's a lot harder to do all of this in one bite than in terms of chunking it down in different pieces where you have some money. And I'm just recalling some of the conversations, and will you correct me if, anything that I said?
I will correct you. Yes.
On any of that stuff, but I think one of the things was, assuming you get it transferred, let's just say you could, and assuming there isn't a lot of funding, like maybe not at all, or whatever it might be, it's our experience that it's a stronger hand to go in and say, we have a two hundred and fifty million dollar solution to the bridge. Can you match it on all of what's required and all of the roadwork? Now, whether that flies or not, but it's our experience that that is a stronger hand than going in with nothing by car.
So if the state did, if your assumption is correct, the state turns it over to us to allow us to do this, in your proposal, you've allowed for, because you can't build the bridge in the same spot, that means you got to realign that road, at least realign it if you don't improve it.
Right.
You've got all that in your calculations.
Well, there are a couple of things that are, I mean, there are a couple of things on all of this. We would do an inspection on the bridge and all of that, and we validate that everything needed, that that actually had to be moved on, all of that. We would validate that, because if there was a solution that actually was completely feasible, that allowed the existing peers to maintain them, to be right there, without having to go to the right, which has some right-of-way property, and then I think there's a government entity on the other side that, you know, are no small pots, but we've done it before, assuming everybody was aligned on that. And again, this would be jointly together, we would need some help on that. We would have to factor all of those in, but I would tell you that we would look very hard at, to what extent can we use anything that's already there for the next fifty years and validate that that's not an option to kind of keep the cost down, and see. We have, and this is not uncommon, it's just, it's not uncommon how you take a look at some of these things. So, you know, we started in some cases on replacements and movements and moved to rehab. So, and there, there are some ways there, and that, that it does a number of things with, without shutting the bridge down completely, because that would have, that's not an option. Like, that's an under, it's probably an understatement, it's not an option, so. But anyway, those would be some of the conditions. We understand it's complicated to all the things you mentioned, Commissioner. We know that there are headwinds. We kind of knew that when we came in here. We came in here and said, we'll invest the time to go ahead and do this and give it a try and see. And even so, assuming there was a path forward that made sense on both sides, that kind of like, doesn't overly tie us up, you know, we made a commitment, said, we really want to try here. We really want to try and help out the community. And there might be some ways to do it, but this is not easy, and it would require some things that are probably outside the box of standard practices in terms of the way things are done. But we also know that to get twenty-five million dollars is no small task right now, let alone two hundred and fifty million. And we know in other communities that people are doing cartwheels for getting twenty-five million or fifty million. And so it's just, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but we're here to answer any of the questions and to think about it, and we wanted to, we appreciate the time to come back and see. And if there's anything else you want to add, Addison?
I think, I think you said it, Doug.
I think that, you know, I don't think we got one positive comment back. And I think that...
I'm sorry?
I said, I don't think we got one positive.
One positive comment back?
Not one. I think that...
Okay.
What concerns people is, you know, there are private roads in Virginia around the Beltway and on the express lanes out to Dulles, and people have seen on the news the horror stories about those tolls, and what they were told they were going to be, and then what they ended up being were two different things. And I think people are very concerned that you say that, you know, we're hoping to keep the toll at two or three dollars, but you don't know that. And once we start down this path, once that train leaves the station, that train ain't got no brakes. And we're going to end up with a bridge that's going to cost whatever, and the toll is going to be whatever. I think that's what's concerned people the most, is that, you know, they've asked you a lot of questions about what's the toll going to be, and I completely understand that today, you... And I completely understand that today you can't tell us what that toll's going to be until that project is done, honestly. I mean, you'll have a pretty good idea once you do a design, what it's going to cost. But as we all know, things happen. COVID happened and prices escalated very quickly. That, I think, that's what concerns people that we're in the middle of this project and something that was not anticipated happens.
Sure.
And all of a sudden steel is ten times what it was when you did your design. And then they're stuck repaying that cost. Because look, you're a business, just as Commissioner Hart, we completely understand that. You're going to get a return on your investment and we understand that. I think that the concern is there are just so many unknowns and variables that, not because of your fault, that, uh, we're reluctant to sign on to this.
So, so I'm really glad you said that, cause I didn't quite get that. And we lived, we're just too close to my, I'm too close to my own business. That's actually not the way it would work whatsoever. This would be a guaranteed fixed price contract at a fixed toll.
You can't do that.
Uh, we've done it five times.
But I appreciate that, but you can't do that. There's no way, well, till you get more information.
Oh, well, no.
You've got a long ways to go before you can put that in writing.
Oh, of course. We haven't even begun.
And that's kind of to our point here. So when you say two dollars and you say three dollars, yeah, I wouldn't say anything at all because perception is a killer. So like you said, somehow nine fifty got out there on social media, well, that becomes perception. See, for me, I'm a business guy too. I'm not on your level. I'm a small guy. I'm little mom and pop shop. But I can tell you this, I don't do anything without knowing what my financial obligations are because I may not be able to meet them. So if I'm talking to a customer and I tell something, I have to know what that financing is. I can't sit there and say, well, I may charge you this or I may charge you that. I, I can't do that because perception becomes reality. You got to, all these people have to check the box from the state level, probably the federal government, I would assume. You're dealing with the Navy base over there. If you remember the conception of that bridge, talked about getting ships underneath of it.
Sure.
So there's so many people that have a say in this thing before you even get down to what they're going to sign off on. I mean, I appreciate some of these conceptions everywhere, but to be, to be fair to the people of Calvert County and St. Mary's County, to float a price right now is unresponsible, I mean, excuse me, irresponsible. You can't do it until you get more information. And then if you had something you could put on the wall here and say, hey, Senator this, signed off this, or blah, 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 you had all your boxes checked and could do a presentation and say, this road would have to go this way, this would have to go this, all these things that have to be done to get there, then you could make that, 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 uh, that price potentially. You could potentially come out with, with a rate. But right now, sit there and go, well, two fifty. Come on, come on, we're business folks. You, you, you can't, you can't guarantee things like that.
So let me help you out here.
Please.
I'm a business guy too.
Please, I love to prove wrong, do it.
And I've worked for a bunch of Fortune 500 companies. And not one of the things that I said was inaccurate.
You going to do three dollars?
You, you, you have to let me finish.
Okay.
We would have to enter into an arrangement to go ahead and do sixty days or more to get into the details. All right? What I can tell you is at fifty thousand feet, it sounds plausible under some certain conditions. The first would be, you would have to get the bridge from the DOT. So we wouldn't invest a minute further until you were able to secure that. This is a joint partnership process. We'd have to do it together, but unless you could do that, there's nothing to talk about. And so we wouldn't go ahead and even get there. So that's why we went in two years ago and we went to the director of the DOT and said, look, if everybody's all on board on here, would you transfer it? And they said, absolutely. You get the people there locally. And I said, that was it. And now it's a different administration. So if that's no longer true, then that doesn't work. We didn't go back and follow up on that. Not every, there are still some people there. So there would be some requirements on both sides. There would also be a requirement in trying to establish a working relation, an agreement to go ahead and pursue this and get from fifty thousand feet down to ground level on that. But based on some assumptions that we have that may be faulty, and again, this would be on our dime, uh, then it, it doesn't work, but we would have some people go ahead and take a look at that. Now, in order to go ahead and do that, that would be, we would have to have an arrangement with you, you as a county or both counties or whatever, pretty much on a, well, I almost just say, you know, ideally on an exclusive basis, which some other states who have RFPs and all of that are willing to consider as tests and things like that, because they're not going to get stuff done otherwise. To get at every one of the questions you just asked at. Now I can't know for sure on all of that and there would be some stuff, but we've done this before. We've worked with FHWA. We've got some, we've got some legislation for a state that no governor's ever had before. I'm not going to use the state. We got it, we got it through. We, we changed laws. So, I mean, we may not be able to do that here. But the point is there are some practical realities too. Let's just say it's five bucks. Five bucks doesn't work. It doesn't work. So if it's five bucks, we'll say, look, we can't, we're going to stop. We also have a history of doing this with like thirty thousand crossings a year. And so we know what a community can tolerate and not tolerate and possibly, and how to go ahead and do that. So it's an approach of taking a look at what's practical reality and what can a community do and take a look at some of those things, which we would dive down into a little bit more. But if we seriously thought that this could possibly be for the bridge, we're not doing the roadway, okay? So we, we, we put, we did a bridge and then egress on both sides, you know, getting in it on and off, whatever that might mean, but it's not two hundred and fifty million more, uh, just on that. If we thought it was nine fifty, we would have said, you know what, this, this is not going to work.
So what did the state say when you had conversations about turning it over to a local authority? What did they state, what did they say about the infrastructure needed to do your project? Because obviously they would have to sign off on that, so I would assume they would.
We, 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 we never got that far. We, we were, we were asking a.
Just a basic question.
One basic question. If this were true and we could, and, and the local communities could get behind a toll, would you be willing to consider, would you be willing to transfer? Yeah. I said, yes, but you have, but you have to have the people there locally. So again, just to remind, I have to remind myself of this, you know, we've been here eight or nine times over the year, you know, so. And again, I'm going to say it again, we're not, we're sharing, we're not here to sell. If this doesn't work, it doesn't work. So this is just, we're just, and I, and I appreciate all your questions because I understand all of that and, but I'm probably skipping some things because I know some things having done it. So I'm making assumptions and probably leaving some things out and kind of process. But, um, if we didn't think it was possible on, on some things to go ahead and we wouldn't have on it. So this was, and we said, you know, I think one of the questions is, are you willing, are you willing to try? And we thought this was a process that was necessary to get some feedback in communities to see how popular or rather unpopular it would be. I'll just try and be balanced on that, just to give both, give the entire spectrum, but we think we know where that came and understandably, and understandably so. This is not the first time we've seen it. And, and you know, there's also this notion of there's the amount of the toll and there's the issue of toll or no toll. And there's a subtlety. And just the fact of going from no toll to toll is a big jump, even if it's really minimal, and I'm not going to use a number. But, um, I would say though, again, and we're at fifty thousand feet and we wanted to, you know, we, you allowed, we agreed and you allowed us to go ahead and get some feedback in the community on this. Okay? We did, and it was robust. Put it mildly for hours, an hour and a half, seven times. So, um, we could have come back here and said, you know what, really appreciate the time and we couldn't even see, uh, we couldn't see any opening to continue whatsoever. And this is a hundred percent undoable. I can't say that that's the case. If it were, we would have, we'd just say that and say, thank you. Is it a long putt? Are there a bunch of things? Yeah. However, and I'm just going to use it, for two hundred and fifty million dollars we're injecting in the community, we're doing it together, it's all equity, we're moving in the community, we would be, or, and we, it would be a partnership. We'd need some help from you too.
What does that mean?
Well, one.
Means money typically.
No.
No?
Not at all.
Okay.
I don't need any money.
So what help do you need?
Getting the bridge. Getting the bridge.
The transfer is one. The notion of we, we'd need your help actually on kind of the notion of tolling. I mean, we got some feedback on all of that.
We did too.
And I, I know you didn't. No, no, and, and look, there's nothing that surprised, there's nothing surprising. They were very.
Is that your first rodeo?
No, that's, this, no, it's not. And you know, and quite frankly, they were very, they didn't like it. They were very, people came up and said, you know what? Thank you for being here. We got thank yous. In spite of all that, they said, thank you for being honest, thank you for being here, thank you for taking. Someone said, thank you for taking the flaming arrows. So, um, but no, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't necessarily be money. It would be access and you know, moving the bridge from one side to another, if we had to be doing that, you know, we. Well, I'll tell you where we need some help. Bypass the RFP process. Now I know that makes feel like it's, you know, breaking, speeding, but, um, in or, in order to get things done, it's some balance between, um, the public practices and the private practices and you know, know what's going to give. But the alternative is, you know, we, we tried, it didn't work. We gave it a shot. It doesn't seem like it's worth it and, you know, and there has to be the political will and the, the community will go on and support it. Because the last thing we can do, I will also tell you, is the last thing we can do is go ahead and build this bridge and no one goes over it. Now I know that wouldn't be the case in this case, but in general, that would be terrible for us. In other communities where they had other options to go ahead, it would be, it would be horrible.
And see, that's the thing here, they don't have.
No, 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 I, no, no, no.
And that's why you see.
No, I, I, I get, I, I get that too, because it's like, you know, you, you got us. I, I, there could be a little of, I guess this.
But some people do have an option. Some people are in a position where they come north and go across.
Two thirty one.
Yeah, but, but I got to tell you, and I, and again, clearly I'm not trying to sell here because I was like, they don't have an option. And so, I mean.
I have an option. So, so we had an example last week. Both, there was an accident on Solomon's Bridge and both, both bridges were closed.
Okay.
Solomon's and two thirty one. That's the biggest nightmare that you could put both down at the same time. And it's gridlock and it's extremely inconvenient. It's, it's, it's the worst case scenario. People still came to my store and said they didn't want to pay a toll. Now, if that was a permanent situation, they'd probably start paying a toll, I guess. If, because you know, they, they, they have to go to work, there's things they have to do over there, but, but, um, and that's why I say, that's why you heard that toll all the time. Even with both bridges closed, it made a bridge conversation around my store and they still didn't want to pay a toll.
Right. And, and, and which is how, this, this is, we tried, we wanted to go ahead and do this.
And I appreciate that, I do, I do.
Right, and, and, but, but, but that, that gets to the point of toll versus no toll. I mean, that's not even, we're not even talking about amounts. So, you know.
And there's no guarantee that if the state ever replaced that bridge, they wouldn't put a toll on it.
Correct.
Anyway.
Yeah, people don't want to.
Well, there were, that, that, that actually came up from someone said, it's, look, this is, whenever this gets done, it's very possible there's going to be toll on it anyway. I'd rather get it done sooner where it's cheaper and all, but you know, that, who knows on that trade off.
Cause almost every bridge has one these days. I mean, have you seen, you know, Bay Bridge, the, you know, I mean, that, and I, but, and, and I've always stood firm that the state and federal government should be paying this bill. I know we're a small jurisdiction. I know we don't have the numbers. That shouldn't matter. Everybody should be equal. But it gets into politics and because there's more delegation in the bigger areas and there's more representation and there's more votes, they get the bigger chunk and the rural areas are always on the outside looking in. So I, I appreciate you being here with that aspect, but.
But, but. Irish Ireland hadn't said anything.
No, I was going to ask him. So if you're five completed projects, were any of them similar to what you're dealing with here geographically? Connecting county to county, working with two counties.
Yes, yes, there, there is a county, there is a demographics, there are some, and there were, there's, weren't told prior to being told, um, existing bridges. So they have some of these characteristics, so.
Did you go through the town halls like you've done here?
Yeah.
Same scenario?
Uh, some of them were actually saying, we need to get it done and, you know, the local government brought them along faster and there was a couple of spirited comments, but we, 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 we were pretty comprehensive with seven meetings here. I'll tell you, that's a lot of meetings, um, on that. And so, but Commissioner, what you just said, I mean, you know, we don't have the insight on all of that and, uh, you know, it's hard to read from up there while you're catching objects in the air, seven, eight thirty at night. But, um, what you just said about, you know, people coming around the store and saying, even with all that difficulty, I don't want a toll no matter what, is, you know, we, we, we heard that and we heard that in certain way. We, but we heard a lot of things, so it's hard to get the noise. And then even so, time away from, look, I think there's probably a shock effect, like just on the meetings in and of itself, saying, look, there's not a lot of money, we need this, and then there's a toll. That's, that's a full meal for anyone. So we completely understand that. So after some time to sit with it and have a couple of time to step away and reflect and, you know, zoom out and then come in and say that, you know, that's pretty telling as well. But what I heard you just, it sounds like they said, it's toll or no toll, uh, and not even the amount, even if it was in the range that I said we might be able to get to, because that might be tolerable. It was, it feels like more toll or no toll period is what you kind of heard around where you were.
That's what I hear.
Yeah, like, like toll or no toll, so.
That's what I hear.
You know, I mean.
And, and, and I've even had the conversations, that may be the only option one day. State may say that's what it is. I mean, I've heard about that bridge since I've sat in this seat.
Sure.
So.
And we are scheduled to have the secretary here next week.
We heard something about that.
So maybe we'll have some questions for him.
Sure.
And see what the perception is.
But, but for the purposes today, you know, we're just trying to help. We, you are a businessman, you're asking all the hard questions. I normally like to ask them not to be, I have to answer them. Just kidding, from other, but no, it's, it's all, it's all good. And, you know, it's all well intended and I think everybody's just trying to figure this thing out that makes the most sense, but it's got to resonate, it's got to work and, you know, it, it can't, it's got to feel okay and not punitive. And we understand that. So maybe the thought is, if, I don't know, if any of this today, us coming in person was helpful to put a little more color around it and some of the things that we think we would need, but we're at a point where we got some feedback, we did what we agreed and talked about, you have it, it was, how should I say it, exciting feedback? And, um, maybe if you want to reflect on it and then, you know, we're in town, I mean, I fly in everywhere, but you know, we come back and if there was a follow-up discussion I fly in everywhere, but, you know, we come back, and if there was a follow-up discussion as you sit with it a little bit more, and we sit with it a little bit more, we got some feedback, and you wanna talk it through again after you talked to the DOT and some of that, but, you know, we, we, uh, we're in the business of trying to make things work.
And we'll get more feedback today, just based on this conversation and the absolute camera that's on.
Meaning, oh, oh, right.
Get more feedback.
Oh, feedback from around.
Citizens, yeah.
I'll be here tomorrow morning at eight in the morning.
You, 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 you will, but, but can I just come back to one thing here, because, uh, there is one point, and, you know, this is a little different, this isn't a time and materials where, look, we'll go ahead, we'll do the project, and, you know, if the costs go up, we're just gonna pass them on. We, we didn't do that in those, they were fixed costs. We looked at inflation, we made estimates way upfront on some of this stuff. We committed to it, we con- contractually committed to the initial toll rates. We had a schedule on what the range of escalations could possibly be on that. That was all contractionally documented on what could be done. 'Cause we've heard that elsewhere, it's like, "Oh, well, it's gonna be $2, and then, $2 year one, and year two, it's $9, and you're, I was like, and you, you, it's gonna be really bad." It, it wouldn't be like that. And I would, there is a subtlety that I have to remind, 'cause I do this all, we do this all the time. If you, we want people to use a bridge. We need people to use a bridge. The people that didn't use the bridge, then that's a real problem on, on our end. Because this isn't getting a, you know, 90% mortgage. This is buying a house for cash with a hundred percent equity. And, um, that means we're here for the long term as well, and, um, I don't know if we do a good enough job of it, like, we're moving into the community if we do that. With 5% down, not so much. And there have been some horror stories of bad situations around the country where people have just done that, and they're like, "Well, just, we'll just pick up and leave." And the communities have, uh, and it's been really bad. And we don't do that.
So, we, we do greatly appreciate you holding those seven meetings and getting feedback, creating feedback for us. I think that, you know, it, for us, the challenge is to this community, everybody, you know, which is that bridge needs to be replaced. No, nobody says that bridge doesn't need to be replaced. I think for us, the hurdle is, uh, selling the community on going from a no-toll bridge to a toll bridge, uh, and the process that we're gonna be involved in as issues arise, you know, that we're gonna have to mediate through if it's land condemnation to get an access or something like that, I mean, they're gonna, it's not gonna be the state that we can blame, you know, the buck's gonna stop here.
Sure, and it's, and, and I don't wanna minimize, 'cause I know you're bringing, it's a lot.
Yeah.
There, there's still a lot left to do, it's not just that simple, like, just putting in a bridge, no, no, we, we got it, and we've done it before, so, so, so we hear that.
We might be at 100,000 feet instead of 50,000 feet, but, and if the state were to say, which I'm sure they're not going to, that, yes, if we replace that bridge, we're gonna charge you a toll, too, that would help, to be honest, you know, at least then, there's, there's not a-
Then you know the future.
Yes, there's not this perception of, "Well, you're forcing a toll on us, if the state does, it's gonna be free." The state's not gonna say that, even if they, but they might do it at, when the time comes, uh, you know. So for us, it's, it's those, uh, principles that, you know, we've gotta deal with, and, uh, but again, I just, I do wanna thank them, have all us doing that community outreach, we do greatly appreciate that.
It's our pleasure, and thank you for letting us in, and we, and, and look, so let's just, wherever it was in late June, we did talk about that, it was, you know, we validated it, toll or no toll.
Absolutely.
That's where we started and ended, say, "Go take it there," and-
Yeah.
Uh, we certainly, and you certainly have confirmed that, and right around your community, uh, uh, on where that is. I will also say, as last thing, is that, um, we have gone through this process before, and it has been, not now, and then they take another pass at exploring all other options, and then they have come back, and that was this instance on one of them that we had, and it was just, it was a step along the way to get there, and, uh, you know, sometimes it's a two-step, multi-year kind of process to kinda, or multi-month, whatever it might be, to go ahead and do that, but, uh, we appreciate your time, if there's follow-up or whatever, actually, it would be helpful, I would have one ask. If someone could call and let us know after you have that, and you spend, like, the next 30 days, just kinda like,
Yeah.
Give us a, I don't know, I, just kinda talk to us, and we can come back here, or someone could just pick up the phone and call us.
Yeah, we're not gonna leave you hanging.
I, I know you wouldn't, but I just had to say it.
Yeah, absolutely, on camera, we all, yep.
I know.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time and, uh,
Thank you.
And the interest, and appreciate your letting us into your community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the next item on the agenda is a presentation, Department of Planning and Zoning Consolidated Transportation Program Tour. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Still morning? Are we gonna tour the bridge?
So joining me this morning is Jason Levitt, Project Engineer Two with the Department of Public Works, and this morning, we're gonna just do a brief presentation on the FY 2024, 2029, to 2029, uh, State of Maryland Consolidated Transportation Program, or CTP, tour.
Good morning, Commissioners, would you like us to read the memo, or start with the presentation?
You could probably just do the presentation.
Thank you.
So, uh, we'll just go over briefly what the Consolidated Transportation Program, or the CTP, is. Uh, the CTP is a six-year capital budget for transportation and infrastructure projects for the Maryland Department of Transportation, or MDOT's, multimodal transportation business units. Those, uh, business units and one authority include the State Highway Administration, the Maryland Transit Administration, Motor Vehicle Administration, the Maryland Aviation Administration, the Maryland Port Administration, and the Maryland Transportation Authority. So some background, the CTP is an annual cycle. Each spring, local jurisdictions are encouraged to submit priority project letters and applications to MDOT. MDOT then works through the summer to determine which projects will be included in the draft CTP. And in the fall, the Secretary of MDOT and the heads of each of those business units visit each county to present the draft CTP. Early the following year around January, the CTP is then submitted to legislator for formal adoption. Thank you, sorry. Uh, so, we'll briefly go over what, uh, Calvert County included in our letter last spring up to MDOT. Uh, last year, we reformatted our letter to simplify our request by breaking down Calvert County's, uh, priorities into just two, two categories, major transportation priorities, which include projects over $5 million, and minor, which included projects anticipated to be under $5 million. Uh, first, on the major transportation priorities, uh, we had Maryland 24, Phases 3A and 3B, which would be to continue the widening of Route Four and Prince Frederick north of Fox Run. Specifically, we, uh, requested MDOT move forward on preliminary engineering and right, rights-of-way acquisitions. Second, as we just heard about-
Before you, before you go-
Yes, please.
Can we, so, just so the public understands, that, that, uh, widening is from, um, uh, Fox Run Boulevard to Stokely Road.
Correct, yes.
And last summer, what did they tell us that's gonna cost? Do you remember? I think I do.
You do.
I believe they told us $40 million. Just for the public's information, that, what is that, a mile, mile, maybe a little more than a mile? The state's projecting that project to be $40 million.
It's like three times as much as they initially planned?
Yeah. Just for the public's information, while they're going through the projects.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So, they did ask us to break down the, the projects into smaller phases, so that was, that was what we did, um, at your direction. So, second on our list, as we just heard about, the Thomas Johnson Bridge. Uh, we request, requested MDOT continue to perform planning and design of the, uh, much-needed bridge replacement. And lastly, uh, is the Transit Transfer Station, so last year, we received funding, uh, for a, uh, needs assessment, and so we asked for additional funding for site development.
And the bridge project, the state projects to be a billion-dollar project.
That's right.
Billion with a B.
Yes.
Now, that does include the bridge and all the road improvements all the way over to Route 235.
That's correct.
But that's what the state says that project's gonna cost.
Yes.
Today, if we did it.
So for our minor transportation priorities, uh, first, we've requested a level of service studies, uh, at several state road intersections throughout the county. Uh, we, again, requested funding for safety enhancements at the Route Four and Maryland 258 intersection, just north of the county line. Uh, third, we asked for funding assistance to extend the sidewalk on Maryland 765, which is Main Street, uh, between Old Field Drive and Calvert Town Road. Um, and we also requested installation of a signalized crosswalk at Maryland 24 and Sherry Lane, right at the fire, um,
Company Two.
It's a company two, thank you, company two. Um, and lastly, we requested assistance to fill in gaps in the street scape in the Lesby Town Center. So the, uh, FY 2024 draft CTP covers more than, uh, $43 billion in Maryland's transportation and infrastructure systems through MDOT's operating and capital projects. However, this draft CTP does have a funding gap of more than $2 billion. Um, Calvert County did not receive any additional funds for our major projects, but the Transit Transfer Station needs assessment is still ongoing. The minor projects, uh, we previously just went over, were not addressed by NDOT, MDOT in the plan, but we are slated to receive a crosswalk at 24 and Sherry Lane. Staff was advised to include this project in the CTP project priority letter, but the Department of Public Works has already, had already started initiating those efforts with, um, SHA. Um, so, that project, uh, they're proposing to start that construction in fall of 2024. So even though the- I'm sorry?
Is that 231?
No, that was the crosswalk at Sherry Lane.
I was gonna say,
Yeah, so-
We had a discussion this morning about 231.
So-
I may not live to see that.
Yeah, so, well, um-
We hope you do.
Yeah. So the previous safety improvements along Maryland 231, just getting there, uh, do remain funded, and moving forward, we, uh, meet with, uh, SHA Quarterly, and I believe that there is a kickoff meeting for construction on one of the,
Yeah, it's a semifinal review meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, when we have the CTP tour here.
They are moving forward. And then the previous sidewalk improvements along B-Side Road remain funded and moving forward as well, I believe they're doing that in phases. So the CTP's tour is scheduled for next Tuesday, November 14th, at 10:00 AM. This will give the Board of County Commissioners an opportunity to, to discuss issues and voice priorities in person uh, with the Secretary and the other representatives of MDOT.
So you don't have on your list the, uh, traffic signal timing proj- project that they're supposed to be designing currently? Shouldn't we have them on the list, at least to remind them?
So, we just went over the project priority letter that we sent this past spring. Um, when we get to this upcoming spring, um, we were not directed to include the signalized-
They said they were going to-
I think it was something that they were already in the works doing.
I have an email that said they're in devo- design phase to do the timing, so, I'll remember to ask them next week.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mark Wills, County Administrator, this is a, a question that can be posed at the, normally the either, every two months, or quarterly meeting with District Five, uh, District Engineers, so we can get you a report on that particular topic, uh, quickly, I'm sure.
We actually have it, get it next week.
Okay.
It is a subject that comes up that is discussed at every single quarterly meeting at this point, and the last one that we had, the information that was provided to us was basically that the lights in Prince Frederick are currently syn- synchronized for the most part. But there is another, I guess, methodology that you could say called adaptive signal control that is, I don't know exactly the specifics of what is difference between synchronization and the adaptive signal control, but Kim Tran from MDOT will be an excellent resource next week to specifically ask, because it gets really into the weeds of traffic engineering, and, um, she does a good job of explaining it, but I will not. So, um, she would be a really good resource for that, but this does come up every quarterly meeting, and we touch base on it, so it's not something that, you know, is left unattended.
Right, I think when we were notified, they were told, we were told it was an 18-month project, and they were in design, and that's probably been six months ago, so. And if they've got information now that the lights in Prince Frederick, 'cause at that time, they weren't sure what lights were, you know, had the, um, technology to do it or not, so maybe we'll get, we'll ask for an update next week, and see what she tells us.
Sounds good.
So this is just preparation for next week, right?
Correct.
So that our minds are fresh.
We'll be coming back, um, after the Secretary, so that we can update our letter before, and have some time to prepare it before we actually send it the following spring, so.
I'm not betting on the Secretary, but-
I've made a personal request to our regional planner, I've said, "We haven't had him for the last at least two years that I've been involved," so, um, we'll see if that, that does anything.
I didn't remember having him at all since I've been here, but maybe.
No, we had, no, that's right, that was done at Mako.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, you're right, we did, the other gentleman, um,
Yeah.
What is his name?
Sean Pell.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's not there anymore.
Yeah, you're right, I think that's the last time I see him.
So I think, you know, we've outlined our priorities, and we'll hear what they have to say next week, as, as we all know, funding comes and goes, so, uh, we're hoping that 231 continues to move. I'm not optimistic of when Prince Frederick Phase 3A and based on what they told us it's gonna cost, when that's gonna happen, and that bridge.
So other than them wanting to replace the bridge for us, I wonder what else is at the top of the list?
Who?
The Secretary.
Oh, oh, he won't have a list.
No, he'll, he'll outline the, the, the draft, uh, that was prepared, and go over, you know, their highlights essentially, and one of their, um, the reoccurring themes is no one left behind this year, which-
We'll see about that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, a couple of years ago, I posed a question, if you're struggling with getting the grass cut on state roads, you know? I mean-
We're plenty guardrails, though.
You know?
Oh, right.
I mean, so-
That's a question for next week, how much does the state spend in guardrails, 'cause, woo.
And, and I can't remember what year it was, but I remember saying, you know, if you're not going to cut the grass on a regular basis, you know, we really have one main road through here, most of our folks commute out of here, it's essential that you maintain that in the winter, you know, with salt and plowing, "Oh, we'll do that," and they did, to their credit, they did. Um, but that's, you know, the level of confidence that I have, you know, I mean, um-
But they're gonna plow and salt, 'cause there's no budget for that. There's no budget for that. Whatever it costs, they do, so-
But anything else-
They will do that, but everything else is always-
So, and that's all I can go by.
Do we have, uh, cost estimates for the improvements to 231? Have you seen them, Jason?
I have not seen them yet.
I just wonder.
They may exist, but I just haven't seen them.
I'm sure they've got them. Just being interested, I know.
I'll see what I can do.
But those three projects are very important to 231, for those people that travel 231.
And it's a dangerous road.
It is, and those three intersections, it's gonna greatly help those.
In my opinion, that's the silver lining, at least, that funding for the time being has remained in place.
Correct.
Of course, you want everything on your list, but it is what it is.
We know what we are.
Right.
That's why we ain't getting a bridge no time soon.
Right.
So. Well, I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And be ready for next week.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. So that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. The Board adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process, a copy of that is found here to my right. By Resolution 51-20, persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the Board shall refrain from statements, remarks, conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the Board's business. All speakers are asked to identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, will you be allocated five? No one is attending virtually, so those in person, please make your way to the microphone, identify yourself, and whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group.
Hi, my name is Greg Bond, I'm the Executive Director of the American Chestnut Land Trust, and representing that group today. I wonder if I could give some handouts first?
Yep. Thank you, sir, very much.
So to begin, our, um, Land Trust is very grateful to the Board of County Commissioners and the planning staff last year for adding a part of Hunting Creek Watershed into the Calvert Rural, uh, the Calvert Creeks Rural Legacy Area. Today, I'm here to ask your support in, um, establishing the same thing in the Fishing Creek Watershed. Many people know Fishing Creek exists, they drive over it every time they visit, um, Chesapeake Beach. They made or may have motored or sailed into the creek, or gotten on a charter boat, or they may have hiked along the railway trail. What they may not know is that it's the third-largest watershed in the county. What they may not know is that it's the third largest watershed in the county. It has thirty percent of the land is farmland, and a whopping sixty-six percent is forested, the largest percentage of any of the major watersheds. This year, ACLT participated in the newly formed Friends of Fishing Creek in testing the upper reaches of the creek and found that nitrogen and phosphorus levels were very low, and that's a good sign of water quality there. Next slot, the next image on page two. However, of all the major watersheds in Calvert, Fishing Creek is the only one that does not have a rural legacy area. And in the last decade, Maryland Rural Legacy Program has been the most successful county tool in protecting lands. During his tenure, Governor Hogan fully funded the program during his eight years, and that had made a major difference. Owners of land in rural legacy areas have that tool that they can use, and by the way, it doesn't require county funds. That's a major advantage. So I think it's not happened before, because if you look at that map and you see that line that goes through between the North Calvert part and Calvert Creeks part, it's hard to create a link between the west and the east over two major roads and get a clear access point to make that happen. But that changed this past year with the expansion of the rural legacy areas, because you brought Calvert Creeks up through, onto the east side where the bridges are on Route Four, and so now you have a possible link to take you up into Fishing Creek. And you could also, there's also now a connection you could do up through Dares Beach Road. And that could be a game changer in terms of getting state approval for it, because they require you to have a connection all the way through. So if you look at the next page, one of the state's criteria is out of Governor Hogan's Wildlife Action Plan, where he targets the most significant lands for conservation to achieve those goals for fisheries and wildlife habitat. And if you look at Calvert County, almost all of it is in one of those primary heritage protection areas. And you look up through the Fishing Creek Watershed, and you see it's almost all of it is in areas that's desirable for conservation based on an action plan. So Slide four. My request is for the board to ask staff to work with us to prepare maps for a public hearing in January so that the landowners could use the Rural Legacy Program in Fishing Creek as early as next year. And I've spoken with a bunch of folks on this, from Rural Legacy, the sponsor of the program, from Southern Maryland RCND, and also with other local land trusts. And so far, all the support has been to make that happen, so ask for your support making that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Thanks, sir.
Looks good.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Cormier, and I'm the Chairperson for Calvert-SECA, the Special Education Citizens' Advisory Committee. I want to take a quick second, a personal privilege, and congratulate my wife Carrie and her sister Catherine on completing their first in-person half marathon. I'm super proud of them. Calvert-SECA is a special education citizen advisory committee by parents of students with disabilities, for parents of students with disabilities. Our next meeting is this evening. The meeting information's online tonight. We're gonna have Sherri Tardio from Calvert Mediation Center, and Parks and Rec is gonna have their therapeutic Parks and Rec services there to present on their program, so it's gonna be a good night for that. Calvert-SECA meets throughout the year to support families in training and informations that they understand not just their responsibilities as a parent of a student with disabilities, but their rights and what their children are required to get under the free and appropriate public education of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We had Dr. Anderson, who had a full year with us now as the Director of Special Education. She just presented their audit from MSD-E. Of course, we're never at a hundred percent, but we're always making strides forward, and they're doing great things in changing their processes to make sure that IAPs, Individualized Education Plans for Students Ages Five to Twenty-One, and IFSPs, Individualized Family Support Plans for our littles and immature toddlers, are being put through with fidelity to make sure these kids are getting the earliest interventions they need to succeed. We can't do that without your support and without the support of the Board of Education, so we hope that you continue to support them. Congratulations to Ms. Turner on her appointment. It's nice to meet you. And congratulations on your twenty-third year as a budget, doing great things. I know we have lots of experience here in the county, and, you know, I know we submitted the letter to MSD-E to ask them for this audit, but we have resources here in the county that we can do things that I don't think they can tell us anything else from a third party somewhere else. I know we've got dedicated staff in the county. Ms. Katie Britton, not to tell tales out of school, but she was answering emails at eleven-thirty last night. Mr. Norris gets back to me within twenty-four hours, so I know that there are dedicated employees, both at the county level and at the school system, to work together without bringing MSD-E down to shake a stick at us. I know that there are ways that we can work together to find these savings and do these things to build this budget. I'll end with, we're less than a year out from the election next year. All three Board of Education district seats are up for grabs, so if you're interested, you know, please file your paperwork and get out there. It's gonna be an important year. Again, I appreciate the continued support for the County Commissioners, for SECA, both at our board ceremonies and working with Calvert County Public Schools for their inclusive track and field events. My son just did a season of cross-country at Northern High School, and I couldn't have asked for a better group of kids coached to, you know, help him grow, and he's in the chorus, and, you know, arts education and athletics. You know, that's what we gotta focus on for these kids. So thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there is no one online, and I can't keep up with Katie, just for the record.
None of us can. None of us can. Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Aron.
On the twenty-sixth, I attended the Tri-County Council Meeting. Also went to Huntington High School, referenced the students getting involved with the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth. Also had a representative from Economic Development there to attend that, so we're gonna be working with the school system and getting our youth involved in that. Twenty-eighth was a memorial service for Michelle and Mike Rockhill at the Long Beach Community Center, which they dedicated the community center as the Rockhill Center. There was a barbecue battle at Sassafras Farms, attended that. And on the third, the Farm Bureau banquet was held at the Calvert County Fairgrounds. It was good to see a lot of representation from Calvert County there. December ninth, it's gonna be the Christmas Parade here on Main Street, Christmas tree lightings. Should be a good time, should be a lot of people there, we're hoping. If you want to register for the parade, it's on OptimistClubofCalvert.org, Friend of Calvert's Youth. We look forward to seeing a lot of people there.
Commissioner Grasso, you joined us.
I did, but I've been online all morning.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Did we do okay?
You did fine. You did fine. I never get to see our body language from out there, so that was...
How's my body look? No comment. No comment.
No comment. Okay. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the Tri-County Council Meeting as well. I had a Zoom meeting with Jefferson Patterson Park on November one. Was up in Dunkirk with the rest of the staff, planning and zoning staff. They had an informative meeting about the Dunkirk Comp Plan. Our staff did a wonderful job, and I think everybody was happy who was there. There was no controversy, so I think we're heading in the right direction, and everybody feels listened to. Attended the Humane Society Bingo at the Elks, and that was a lot of fun. It was. Two-hundred-and-five tickets were sold. It was jam-packed with hardcore women, for sure. And then I attended the NAACP Luncheon in Huntington at Bethel Way. That was very, very well-attended and quite nice. Also, I wanted to thank all of you who have expressed your condolences with the passing of my father. And I also wanted to make you aware, I don't, maybe some of us old-timers will remember this, but Charlie Walton in the north of the county, he owned property up there, he farmed land, he developed up there, sold property to Ed Howland, and his son-in-law and daughter are very good friends of ours, and his son-in-law passed. So if you keep the McLaughlin family in your prayers, I'd appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I typically don't talk about a lot of meetings that I do, just because that's what you pay me to do, but you hear us a lot, between us and the Board of Education, and I think sometimes it gets a picture painted that we just throw darts at each other, and it's not the case. I mean, it's sometimes it's uncomfortable, maybe, but we do talk, believe it or not, and I met with Board of Ed member Don Belinsky down at Patuxent High School with the principal and the A.D. director down there, and Tony Navarro, who I believe his official title is number two, but he's right behind superintendent. But anyhow, I've known them all for years. And Tony actually called the meeting to kind of discuss where athletics are in the county, in particular down there, because you hear a lot of us talking back and forth, and it was, it was the first meeting I've had in almost nine years since I've been here, actually on that subject. I thought it was a good meeting. If anything else, everybody admitted we needed to do better. So, and they have plans that they're putting in place, and hopefully we'll see the state of athletics and other things get better in the county. But I just thought it was important you hear that, because you hear, it just seems like we just can't even be in a room together, and that's just not the case. Also wanted to pay my respects again to Secretary George Owens. You know, when I first came on, the only person younger out here was Steve Weems, and Steve was only younger than me by about a year or so. And George was part of an old-school, and I don't know how to even say this respectfully, but like where the bar was here of how you conduct yourself and how you carry yourself. And he, he was very good to me, but in a way that I don't want to say you had to earn it with George, but you kind of had to earn it a little bit, you know? He just didn't say, okay, well, hey, you're on the team type thing. He was very point-blank, which I appreciate. He was very good to me and very honest with me, because God knows, it's documented, I made a lot of mistakes my first four years, and George was very honest about a lot of that, and took the time to talk to me about that, which a lot of people wouldn't have done, who wouldn't have cared enough to take a minute to do that, and he did. And I made, I made a comment to somebody, you didn't follow George at a meeting. I'm telling you what, if George was emceeing and you came up behind him, just don't, because he was fantastic. I mean, I can't do him justice, but I'm telling you, you see George in a room and George get talking, his hands get out, and he'd say, okay, and it was such and such date, and it was this person, and that person, and you know, and you're just captivated. He's just an incredible speaker and just a great personality, could always make you laugh, and I'll truly, truly will miss him. I think we're gonna miss a person there in Calvert, so absolutely. Thank you.
May I say one thing? I mean, I'm always coming back.
That's okay.
George Owens as well, when I was running for this position, I talked to a lot of people, but George Owens and Mike Benton told me I didn't have a chance of winning this seat. And George was always honest. It was because I was running against an incumbent. They supported me, but I tell you, it was a kick in the butt I needed. I ran five times as hard or against my opponent, and I creamed him. So George Owens was a wonderful man.
So you had to open that up. So I'm walking out of function, and, you know, I'm kind of low-key with a lot of stuff like that. I don't put out nine million signs, and I don't like the political process at all. Anybody that knows me knows I can't stand politics, yet I have a political job, so it shows you how smart I am. But anyhow, walking out of function, I'm not gonna tell you all the people who's around, because we all know everybody, but George saw me, he goes, Mike Hart, they're counting you out. Yeah, they say you don't have a chance, but I'm betting on you. I'm betting on you like this, you know? He's just so comical, you know? And I said, well, thank you, Mr. Owens, thank you for that, you know? And the person he sat in front of, I know wouldn't vote for me. Okay, so, and my wife goes, what is with you? And I said, you know, he's just a great guy, that you know what he's thinking, and I just loved being around him. I really did, but I wasn't gonna bring that story till you said that, but I said, well...
That's good. Good stories.
Are we done now?
Yes, sir. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. So I just want to open with, in comments, if you were paying attention, Mr. Bowen made a proposal to us about Fishing Creek, and I think staff is definitely gonna follow up on that, because if I know what I think I know, two of the largest privately-owned tracts that are left in Calvert County are in that watershed, and we should have every tool available to try to protect those. So this doesn't impact anyone, it just gives you another tool in the toolbox to try to preserve some land. So we're gonna get staff to help you, Mr. Bowen, and get that taken care of. So thank you.
The sitting right there?
Yeah. I too attended the Farm Bureau banquet, and there was a hundred and eighty people there. And as Commissioner Aron said, it's always good at those kind of events for us county natives, it's the one opportunity we get to see a lot of our friends and family from way back and have some good food. Want to thank the President Kathy Castro for putting on a good event that night, and really appreciate the opportunity. On Saturday, I could not attend the NAACP Luncheon, because I had to attend a funeral. I mentioned in public service announcements, had to attend a funeral of a nineteen-year-old young man who made a decision that his life wasn't worth living. And the unique story to that, the backstory of that is, I was with his father in Colorado on a hunting trip when that happened, and to see a father have to go through that initial, you know, was horrible. But as I said in public service announcements, you know, it doesn't matter how old you are, if you have issues, there's help out here. And as parents, we need to love and support our children, because he certainly had no idea that his son would do that. And you hear that a lot when this happens, that parents or friends or family will say, had no idea. So, you know, sometimes there's nothing we can do, but we need to do everything we can, because we are not designed to bury our children or our grandchildren.
No.
And the Howells family's gonna have a very hard road for a very long time. I know a woman who lost her son when he was seventeen, and she died at seventy-five, and she said, I miss that boy every single day. So just make sure you take care of your loved ones and think about them and help them as best you can, because you never know. So unfortunately, I couldn't make the luncheon, and that night, I did go to the ERC, Employee Recognition Committee, had a Fall Fest event at the Marine Museum, had crabs, which I was greatly disappointed in, because this time of the year, you are not supposed to get bad crabs, but we did. So, but had about forty people there, I guess, that night.
A little over sixty.
Oh, sorry, I can't count. Had a good time, they had games, and since it was right after Halloween, they were dressing up. I didn't get the memo, but I went and dressed up anyway.
You said you were a farmer.
I was a farmer, I didn't have a hat. No farmer, no self-respecting farmer goes without a hat. So I tried to fake it, but they had a good time, and it's always good to see staff get together and not work, although I think we did work, didn't we?
We did.
We worked. Everybody else didn't work, but we worked. So really appreciate the committee for putting on that event. I know it takes a lot of work, and they had to reschedule, so that always makes it twice as hard, but really want to thank them for their efforts. Also have to apologize, we had a scheduled joint meeting with the Board of Education, was supposed to have happened last night, but as I, you heard me a little earlier, I was out of town, and believe it or not, there are parts of this country where you still can be without cell service, and I was without cell service, and I had not tied up loose ends, and that's on me, why we canceled that meeting, but we are gonna reschedule that meeting. So just for anybody out there that has some theories, it's all on me, and we will get that corrected, and we will be meeting. I think that's about all I have, so Mr. Vice President? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General provisions, Article Sections three-dash-three-oh-five-B-one-I, to discuss appointment, employment, and such matters with employees over with whom the Board has jurisdiction, as is allowed by law, three-dash-three-oh-five-B-seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.